We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Westerfield.
Yep.
Woltman.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Hoss.
Here.
Stankey.
Here.
Okay, no public forum. Consent agenda. Any additions, corrections? Not need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion we approve consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Woltman.
Yep.
Stankey.
Yep.
Hoss.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on the proposed sale of the city-owned property. Any input? Good, bad, or indifferent?
I've received no input.
Okay.
Other than that, a little bit of good news is that we now have a legal description for the property, so we can proceed then with the sale. So I'll work with Aaron, we'll get the documents ready. It'll show up at the next council meeting, but we do have a legal description of it now. Otherwise, I thought we were really gonna have to have it surveyed. And so at least that's positive.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, police officer recruitment, Ted?
Well, as of the 12th, John Meister has done, so I guess my question to the council is how you want to proceed on this. Do you want to just take applications like we did before and start back on that? Or I've had a couple guys that come in and talk to me, but at first I just hadn't wanted to add another one today, so I consider it actually of interest. We just will go ahead and try to take the application. But one thing I really would like to ask the council is what we, one of the biggest things we need to do is we've got to look at the pay scale of these officers. And they can go eight miles down the road and get a $5 pay increase. Alls we're gonna do is certify them and send them down the road. They're not gonna stay, and you can't blame them for doing it. But it's really, to me anyways, it's ridiculous that they're that far behind the rest of the officers in the county. I've got an officer here that's been here over 15 years, and he makes the same as the guy that's been in Sack City for four years. So there's not even comparable, and I really think that we need to look at that. One of the things is, the union is, who sets this, has no officers that belong to the union, so they have nobody representing them. That's their own fault, they're not doing it. But to me, I really don't want to see forcing them to join the union just so they can get some money. But I just think you really need to consider looking at something to get these guys at least comparable, or we're not gonna keep my brothers.
Is there a chance you could go around and compare the wages to say?
I can tell you what I can do. I can compare wages to 300 departments, and it's not gonna make a darn bit of difference. They're going to Sack City and Sack County is who they're looking at. And Sack City paying $5 an hour or more for an officer to start than our officers that are here for 15 years. That's what they're looking at. They don't care what anybody else is looking at. But they'll have the opportunity to stay in Sack County and move. And they're not gonna have to move to the residence. You can't blame these new guys, even though they're under a two-year contract. Somebody comes in and says, hey, we'll give you $5 an hour more, they come to us, they're running. Well, there's two of them. I just think that we've fallen way behind. When I came here, the Lakeview Police Department was the highest paying in the county, and now they're not even above.
I think we might have to look at that.
I'd take our advisement, see what we can find out.
So you guys want to have Ted start the process, and then we'll have to start working on some wages?
Yeah, I don't know how we need to go about that. Do we need a committee, or just come back to the council and try to discuss that? Because one of the things that they're going to ask to get applicants is, for instance, last time I had one certified person apply, and as soon as I told him what the salary was, they laughed and said, don't call that guy. So I really think that we need to try to address this before, while we're in the process of hiring somebody, so we can try to get somebody to come here. And not only that, we expect them to come here, and we expect them to move here. And I don't know how you can expect somebody to pay him $15 an hour and want him to move to Lakeview.
Is that the starting wage is $15 an hour?
What's that?
Starting wage is $15 an hour.
Um, starting wage is $16.25, and it takes them three years to get to the top. After three years, right now, the top wage in our police department is $19.94. So Royce has been here 16 years, and he makes $19.94, and you've got somebody that's gonna offer $5 more, which is actually $3 more than him to start a position. It just makes no sense that he has to be that far behind everybody else. And whether we like it or not, that's what they look at. They look at dollars, they don't look at anything else.
Well, how about between now and the next council meeting, Ted and Scott and I will get together, and we'll come back to the council. We can start the process, and we'll come back to council with some prices or some wages. Would you guys be up for that?
I just think it's something we need to at least look at while we're in this process.
So we'll need a motion for Ted to start?
I don't think we can go without.
Oh, no, we gotta.
Police.
No, no. We gotta start the process, but by the time we get to next council meeting, we should have some figures for the council, I would think.
I think you and Scott should get some figures together for next council meeting.
Yeah.
Go from there.
One other thing that I'd like to ask, and I don't know if you can make a decision on it tonight or not, but especially right now, we're going to need our reserve officer. We only have one that's a certified reserve. Same thing, we're paying a certified reserve officer $10 an hour. They work water, cardboard, or another event, Farm Fest, we pay them $20 an hour. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But what I'd really like to do is, I would like to, especially now that we're in this position, I would like to see that our certified reserve officer be moved up to $15 an hour. He went through the training, and we're gonna need him. Well, there's less paying somebody $15 than paying the rest of them all the overtime. But I just think we need, I don't know if that's something we can do. It's just something I'd like to see done.
Can we do that?
If you'd want, yeah.
So we need a motion for Ted to look for a new officer to start the process. We need something to do with the reserve officer?
Yeah.
Is that separate, or is that one?
Um, I'd say that is separate. We can have a motion to advertise and begin recruitment.
You're gonna get together with Ted then?
Yeah, well, this'll just start, this'll even just start the process. It takes several weeks to have applications out there.
And do we have like a deadline or something to accept applications?
Yeah, it'd be.
We'll have to establish a deadline.
Yeah, three or four weeks probably is plenty.
Right now, when I was looking at it today, I was looking at the earliest we would have the deadline is in September 12.
I mean, you want, you want to just talk through the process a little bit, chief, of what happens out of, out of your applicant pool?
What you have to do is set up an application deadline, and after the deadline, we've got to bring whoever's interested in a job, they have to come in. The first thing we have to do, they have to take physical agility test and post-exam. In order to qualify to even be hired, they've got to pass them two steps before they can go anywhere. Once you take the post-exam and the physical agility, which last time it narrowed us down to, so I mean, it really narrows it down. Once you get to that point, and you're down to one or two applicants, then the next step is you go down and take psychological examination, and that's down at the academy. Once that is down, then you can start hiring. Once you hire them, from the day we hire them, depending on where they go, we have up to 12 months to get them certified. The one thing, the full academy, if they go to the full academy now, they're looking at going to 16 weeks for that. If they have a criminal justice degree, we can get them into WHIP, or the last two of them went, and that's eight weeks, of course. So that's one of the biggest reasons why I really think that we need to look at ways to be able to keep these guys. We throw a lot of money out there, throw a lot of training for somebody else to snap them up.
Okay, we'll need a motion for Ted to start the hiring process.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Stankey.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
And then we'll need one to bump the reserve up from 10 to 15.
And I, and I just want like a comment, and I think the reserve should, should really have, I can't believe he's only getting $10 an hour.
Well, that's the way they were hired. This has been just, just a couple of years ago, and it was $10 an hour, but he wasn't certified at the time. That's, I guess, the one big difference is that he is certified.
Certified, no.
Well, I think we ought to bump him to 15 personally.
I'd make the motion, he'd be bumped up to $15 an hour.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Stankey.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, thanks Ted.
Is that it?
Okay, we'll consider the site plan for Dollar General. Everybody get your Bible, 22 pages.
You know, the, the heck of it is, I gave you about half of the packet.
Oh, no way!
There's, there's a lot of other sheets that didn't have a whole lot of more information on. But if you wanted the electrical or mechanical or anything like that, we've got it. But, um, you know, the only thing we check for around here is zoning compliance, basically. And I know grading is always of interest to you, but let's just take a look at the, at the front page. There's the lot 200 feet wide, 300 feet deep, and there's a 9100 square foot store in there with all of these parking spaces around it. Then, as the planning and zoning commission was, was reviewing this, they really didn't have any comment on it other than the only thing that they raised this question was, well, how can they get deliveries, the docks in the back? How do you get semis to go back in there? But they do pull in, and they pull into the, into the parking lot, and then back around, and clarified that with their engineer, the front parking space, spaces are a lot wider than normal, so that can happen. The other thing of interest is the grading plan, C2, because people look at that and say, boy, it drops downhill there, which it does, so, and it will. Now, it will drop downhill faster to get to their flat construction area.
They're starting September 1st still?
Yeah, that's, that's what their building permit said. And I don't know, I'd just be surprised if it happens that quickly, you know. But everything is in order as far as the plans go. I've been contacted by some subcontractors asking questions already, so they are in the bid process now.
So you need a motion to approve this site plan?
This would be to approve the site plan. Any questions, any?
I'll make a motion to approve this site plan for Dollar General.
Second?
My kid is outside.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Why do you second? Roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Stankey.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Okay, now we need a motion to approve the building permit for the Dollar General.
And who's that jury? Is that jury?
Yeah, they know what they're doing there. They have more than one.
Dave was the second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, Hoss.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Stankey.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Okay, resolution 1429.
This is just a formal agreement through the DOT for the trail grant. So this is $200,000 in transportation enhancement monies. These are federal dollars, and then that's the, the formal contract was, was in the packet. We need to approve this thing by resolution, and then we'll submit the, submit the signed agreement, and we're good to go. Here is really however, how far we are on the process, that these are preliminary plans for the trail. Because these are federal dollars, the bids have to be let through the DOT, and they have, just have a stringent series of requirements that they have to meet when going through bidding. So those are the preliminary plans, and they'll continue to get their approvals and then refine them from there. But, and really, the plans are just lay out really what we had talked about before. When you think about the trail, if we start at the trail, at the end of the existing Ice House Point Trail, there kind of by the boat ramp, okay, jumps across the street, and goes on the west side of the street, continues actually, then south through the trees. So there's a 25-foot path of trees that, that's removed from that area, and this trail's installed there and through there. As it gets down further south to within, I don't know, 100 feet of South State Road, you get into a lot of area that is wetlands. So in order to avoid any problems with the Corps of Engineers, the, the trail comes up and would just share part of that access road as it goes around the wetlands. Okay, gets out to South State Road, goes on the, on the pavement, just sharing the pavement as it crosses the bridge, gets over to Ice House Point, right by that parking, the little parking area where fishermen park kind of over there, the furthest west part of the park, and that's where the trail picks up again, and meanders a little bit, but basically parallels the road. Say it's, again, 7,500 feet off of the road is, is where this trail would go as it proceeds to the north, and stops right at the top of, of the hill, again, right next to the, right next to the road, but that's where it would stop it. Mainly for sight distance purposes up there.
You wanna go up to the road then?
Yeah, go up to the road. At the top of the hill, at Ice House Point, or at Gunshot Hill, there's a little rest area that's, would be incorporated into it.
That shelter house up there and stuff?
Yeah, it doesn't go to the shelter house, no. But just a, kind of a circular area off of the trail that we've put some benches there. A little rest area.
Shelter houses don't be used too much up there?
Not much. That is a underutilized part.
This has taken four years to get this far?
Yeah, I suppose it's taken three or four years to get this far. Bids, bids are slated for December or January through the DOT, with then construction being, hopefully, first thing next spring.
That goes up to shot down hill, but then it don't go to the south at all?
Nope, no, that's, that's where it would end. You know, that's, we don't have any, any funds to go any further, so that's it.
Any more questions? If not, we need a motion on 1429.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Stankey.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to a good topic, the salvage yard.
I want to just go through this real quickly. It can be on page 11. We bring this up as, if anything's happening with the, with the rare and salvage yard, now would be the time to think about the future in far, as far as what, what you would like to see as far as salvage yards in town. Do we, basically, do you want to be able to allow them? Now, here, we have a salvage yard ordinance, and this is it, it's on page, it starts on page 11. And this does not define salvage yards by the fact that they, you know, do salvage work, part out cars or anything. When you read the definition of this, a salvage yard in Lakeview is, is five junk motor vehicles or more. And that, really, that's how we define it. So there's some other instances in town where you could make the case then that they might even fall underneath the salvage yard ordinance. So what this really does then, it says if you've got five or more vehicles, then you've got to meet some criteria, and it's the, the chain link fence around them. That's, that would be the main criteria, that it's chain linked, and you can't see in them, and there's some, that's the criteria about having a salvage yard in town. My question to you is, you know, what, what's your feelings about the general notion of salvage yards? So we wanted to try to allow them with, with some regulation, or another option is just simply don't allow it. And if you do away with, do away with this ordinance, you're then falling under regulations of the state. But you're also falling under regulations of our zoning, okay? So the state still allows this under specific instances. Within our zoning, we would certainly argue that salvage yard is a heavy industrial use. We do have a heavy industrial zone, but we actually only have one parcel of land that's zoned as heavy industrial in our, in our future land use planning. So basically, it has the net effect of zoning that out of town, and not allowing this as a future use. But the other option that we could look at is to say, nope, we, we just want to be consistent with what the state DOT does. And the state DOT, I listed that in, in your memo, it's one of the main things, is you've got to have an office, it's open 32 hours a week, you know, it has to be a true functioning business.
You know, I think one of the things that you hear from people that come to visit like you and stuff is how clean our city is, and how neat it is. And I guess, looking at a junkyard, number one, it's, it's a good business, I mean, selling parts, used parts and stuff, but it does, is unsightly. And, you know, I would rather see it be outside of town than I would be, would rather see it inside of town. So I, I would, you know, if we have to drop our ordinance or to go along with what the state says, and, and just not allow another one in, I think that's, I guess, where I'm coming from, where I'd, would I be a figure out, because, you know, they are unsightly, and they do attract some rodents and, and stuff. But on the other hand, they are a good business, if they're operated as a good business.
I don't think they've sold anything out of Albert's.
Yeah.
For a while.
But, but I'm thinking, once this one is cleaned up and everything, that within the city limits, like you, personally, I guess I would not, I would like to not allow a junkyard.
Not see it again.
The only thing is, they better probably kill the rats and whatever's in there first before they start tearing things apart, or they'll all be up that one.
Is that what's gonna happen, is have you talked to Tim, or who's in charge?
That's a good question. Maybe Ted knows more than I do.
I have no idea.
There's been some scuttlebutt, though, about getting it cleaned out, just selling it, so. But I'm sure there's differing opinions on that, too, about how they go about doing that.
I, I get along good with Tim. I mean, I don't see each other very much, but I mean, it's probably, we'll run into each other. I guess I've never, that's never come up.
There probably really is no reason for them to keep that, is there?
I don't know.
You know, they, they would still think, think that there's some value in some of the, some of the vehicles.
Well, if, if they're not operating it as a business, you know, for 32 hours a week right now.
They've lost the recycler's license from the state.
It would be considered a public places.
Well, they've had some offers, and I might, you know, give them a good eye to look at.
That's part of my point, I guess, about the, about the ordinance, is that basically, you know, we, we allow them so long as they continue to meet these criteria about the fences and stuff. And we'd have a tough time ever changing the regulations on the rarity property.
Right.
You know, I just don't see that.
I understand that, 100%, but.
It's just thinking about the future.
Everybody else?
I don't want to say no, but that's my opinion. What's, what's our legal options?
Suggestions?
Well, you know, a couple of years ago, John and I talked about what DOT requires, and I like, I like that idea that if on down the road, there is a salvage yard, you know, we need to have more rules and regulations than this ordinance states. So whether or not Raridan sells this as a salvage yard is another question. You know, they could sell the stuff within and not sell the yard. So I don't know if there's a buyer out there who wants the stuff or wants the yard. It's a big question. But it's not operating now, so.
So then? Your recommendation is to adopt the DOT rules as far as junkyard, salvage yard?
I can sell.
I can imagine somebody wanting five cars in the yard, and that's it, six kids.
This does say five junk vehicles.
Right.
Now, you've seen my house!
No!
They're all run.
They do run.
You don't have a place in town that I, that's not a salvage yard, but they have a fence.
It's on the south Lake Street.
I don't know whose house, but we need to, we need to inspect that and clean that up.
But we need to start with adopting a DOT regulation. So what, what kind of a motion do we need to do that?
Well, if everybody's on board, if you could instruct me to prepare that ordinance that's consistent with the DOT regulations, we could do that.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
We need that motion.
Yeah, Scott, I'll, I'll look at that along with the state law regarding salvage yards.
What about the county?
Will be consistent.
What about the county law, I wonder?
I don't know what the county has.
I, I don't know that they, I don't know.
I know years ago, when, you know, Paul, you know, Barrett's over there, they plucked around with that. He was gonna move that to his farm south of town, and then they ended up keeping it in town, so I don't know what ever happened there.
Well, that's something I have to look at, I suppose.
Because it was outside the city?
No, because he's driving south of town, or you know. But, well, at one time, they was after him.
The town?
To part of the city, I would imagine, because of the road and problems.
Well, if we adopt the DOT, at least we'll stop the next one coming in, more likely.
Yeah, I don't know.
Or it, or it functions as a legitimate business.
Right.
But outside the city limits?
They still have to work around our zoning stuff, which I, I think we're zoned pretty tight.
Okay.
I feel pretty good about that.
Motion?
So if you ramp up the rules and regulations on salvage yards, that would affect where it's anyway?
Oh, because, no, because didn't we just discuss that, that they're kind of grandfathered in?
Somewhat, but, you know, I could also, I guess, have the contention that if they wanted to, again, open this as a functioning business, they would need, need to meet the requirements of the DOT, and which they would, they'd need to get a permit from them. And in order to get that, they gotta meet this, these requirements.
Have they, have they allowed, have they said they're not running this as one right now, or what?
I, I don't know.
I mean, is there any evidence to that, or?
If you go on the website for the DOT, they're not listed as a licensed recycler anymore.
This just sounds like we've been down this road before.
Well, that's, you know, I guess.
We have made headway, though.
All they do is, is think, don't think about this as a current situation, it's just thinking about what, what restrictions we'd like to have for the future.
And then a separate thing would be what to do with.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
This is just to update it to the DOT regs.
I think we should talk to them, find out just what their intentions are. But I don't know.
I don't think they're ever gonna get a straight answer, because I don't think they know.
Well, then, do we put some teeth in there, say you have silly days, just like a public nuisance?
Well, they, they're gonna balk right then, to do that, get a lawyer.
We've done that before.
Yeah.
But we've done okay so far.
But I think the only other way we could do is just talk to them and see what's, you know, if we can't work something out, or.
And we can do that, you just may get two different stories. That's, that's.
In the meantime, we need to adopt these DOT regulations for the next one. That's what we need to do now.
Well, I'll make that motion that we pursue a new ordinance following the DOT regulations.
To direct Scott to line that up.
Direct Scott and Aaron to look into that, and come back to the council with the new ordinance.
Okay, do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, Woltman.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Stankey.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Okay, Lon, you got anything?
Not a lot, other than that man left. You, you guys kind of sit down there and.
I, I don't know that they might even know anything about it.
They don't know anything about, yeah.
Okay, all right.
It works coming to that.
Well, the man left down there, Mike Mitchell was using it the other day, which we've all been complaining about, probably ain't the safest thing to be in. But he was driving it the other day, not touching anything, and it started steering one way, and then they couldn't get it to stop, and so they just shut it off, and that's where it's at. So we got something short now in there. I mean, what would have happened if somebody was 60 foot in the air and that thing took off like that, you know? I vote not to use it.
Well, just, just the history on the thing is that they, we've had electrical and control problems with that thing, really since we got it.
Since we got it.
And they've, they've replaced a lot of the wiring and the control panel, and worked okay for a little while. But, boy, it's been having a lot of problems. And they've been complaining about it for a couple of years. And they've been complaining about it for a couple of years when they use it, about how much play is out there in the boom and the thing would move, you know, and then this last time, though, was just kinda the final straw, starts moving on its own because there's some additional electrical problem in it.
The big thing is, it should be inspected, like electricians, boom trucks, and it's never been inspected, and we just use it, but I think it's getting to the point where it isn't worth the time and mess, especially if we get somebody hurt, you know?
We talked about this morning about.
Yeah, it was.
Putting it up for bids, along with the old cop car and the red truck. I think that was the consensus we came to this morning, that the council needs to say, hey, just put these three up for bids and get rid of them. Lift is no good.
Sell it as it is where it is, and, you know, we'll get it all down to the shop if we can.
You can't trade it in on.
You know, somebody might take it on trade-in, Gus, but, you know, we've talked about that, you're probably looking at 50 to 60,000 for a different one. Maybe we should just look at renting one for a couple of years and see how the option go that way, rent it a week at a time, you know, and do what we gotta do, and see if that would work. I don't know if that's an option, but I.
You use it primarily for.
Try for a while.
Just trimming trees.
Just trimming trees.
Trim the trees, what it gets used for, and then they used to put banners up with it and stuff like that, and flags, but, you know.
But it's unsafe.
Yeah, right now, it's.
Our exposure now, if it's brought to the council, and something would happen, we'd then get sued.
That there would be.
Well, that's what I'm wondering about, if you sold it as is.
Don't even.
Can they still come back at us?
I don't think so.
No.
You're selling it as is, you're buying it as crap, you're selling it as crap.
So, like, who rents Haley's, or who rents that?
You know, we went up and got a mini excavator tonight, and out there at Storm Lake, they had two of them sitting up there, so. And I did think to ask how much it was to rent one for a week or a month, or, you know, that one, we just was looking at them on the way out the gate, you know, so.
We just don't use it enough that we could've rented the thing for a little bit of time, take it back, and done with it.
I mean, and there's times when you might need it, but we do have the other basket trucks in emergency that we could use.
Well, my thing is that if you rent it, that you could schedule your, especially if you're talking about tree trimming.
Yeah.
You know, schedule for a week, and then.
Yeah.
See what kinda deal you can work with it. I'm not, I think that's probably, because it'll go back to like that board machine.
Yep.
It'll sit there, it's like, these guys use it a couple of weeks, and then.
Yeah, thanks.
So I don't think we're out on it that much, if I just.
We'll try it for a while, and, you know, see how it works.
And there, it's gotta be safe, because they couldn't.
They couldn't rent it, no.
Right, sure.
So we're gonna lease them with Big, or list them with Big Iron for, we'll take sealed bids on all three, if everybody's okay with that.
Seal bids and open them at a meeting?
Yes.
Well, actually, if we list through Big Iron, it sells as an online auction.
They auction.
All right.
We did that with the police car here, got more than we've ever got for a police car before. Bigiron.com.
Didn't mean to interrupt you, Lon.
No, I think that's, you know, sewer plant, we're waiting on pump yet down there, and, you know, that's all I really got.
Water meters are fine.
Ah, we're still working on it, but I mean, I talked to half dozen people today, and it'll be this fall, you know, they're kinda waiting to shut the cabin down, then they're gonna do it, but we're probably 60 left, something like that, not too bad.
You wanna talk about that sewer out at Rhodeyville?
Well, Gussie at Point called me out there the other day in Rhodeyville, they had a, you know, they thought it was a water leak coming up, it did sewage coming up out of the ground, I'm gonna hire Pete Howell to come in, and I think it's the pressure main, and, you know, we're gonna have to take a camera down inside there and see if they can see where the hole is, I mean, because we have no idea, there's, they could've hit it anywhere in that 500 feet, you know, and it's just following the conduit back.
You know, this is just speculation, or maybe educated speculation, is that the force main got hit when Corn Belt's putting in their fiber system, you know, and they're just boring, so that's, we need to find out what the problem is, so that's the idea about televising this. It will run into hundreds, or a thousand, or more dollars quickly.
Just to camera it.
And, yeah, and then we'll have to deal with Corn Belt about that.
Paying that.
Yeah.
What's that, Gus?
Corn Belt's good about paying for everything.
Yeah, I hope so.
And I've dug a couple of them up, and it's been their problem.
This is gonna take quite a bit, because, you know, it's a, that pressure main will have to be shut down, and then we'll have to, depending on how long it's gonna take, we may have to have a honey wagon out there to suck out of the lift station, and then there's check balls that'll have to be tore apart to drain that line so the camera can come down, so we'll probably have to jet the, we'll jet that sewer line, which ours hasn't got a long enough deal on it to jet that whole thing, but it's probably, I'm gonna say it's 1,000 feet. So we might be able to go in one way and come back, but you're pulling the water uphill then, that probably won't work. We gotta get that line emptied out somehow.
Keep track of it, I think.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, Scott and I had a conversation about today, what are, we thought we'd bring it up to you guys tonight. We're aware of it anyway.
Well, for their insurance, if they have insurance, you probably have to give them notice.
I would like to say we're not, we're not losing a lot of water out there either, you know, I didn't like it's running down the ditch into the lake, 'cause it isn't.
I've heard about it.
Yeah.
But it's on the schedule to taking that.
Yeah, we're in the process of it.
That's terrible. That's it? Okay. Scott?
Yeah, just a couple of things here. On this building permit in the urban transitional zone, it's on page 13, did everybody kinda understand this concept? So, of course, we have city zoning, but Sack County now has zoning too. And when you look at the map, you see all that white, that's ag, you know, and basically everything in the county zone is ag, other than when you get around some of the parklands and the areas around the cities. So the areas around the city, they have what they called this urban transition district, and the concept there is that they would, just wanna make sure that development that goes on within that district is consistent with development that goes on in the community. Okay? You know, just one really important thing to consider, though, within county zoning, and actually city if it applies, is that agricultural uses are exempt from zoning. So if anything, if anything ever comes up, it's agricultural, and the biggest thing that would come up is like hog confinement, you know, and if we get those questions, they're exempt from zoning. They got a lot of other requirements that they would have to meet, but they're exempt from zoning. In this case, this property that they're talking about is Tim Laney's, it's out there right by Evapco. Tim has turned in a building permit to construct a shed out there. So it's, he said it's a 50 by 48 by 10-foot shed.
So what, I thought that was in the city.
No.
No, it's not. It, even the property to the east, all that Evapco property there directly to the east, that is, but Tim's is not.
Oh, okay.
Tim's, and then everything over to those two houses to the west, that's not. So, just the concept here is that under the code, under the county zoning code, they want the development to be consistent with the city, so they have these building permits submitted to the city, and for consultation. You know, so this is the first time this has ever happened to us, and I was talking with Aaron about what we should do about this. I mean, it's not like we could approve a building permit, because we don't have any regulations in the area, of course, that apply, because it's not in the city limit.
Terrible decision.
Yep. So, you know, as we discussed that, it's probably just that we would acknowledge that we've been given the opportunity to consult. If you have any input on it, we could give that input back to them, but really just acknowledge that we were consulted.
Anything we can do.
He did tell us when he bought it that he planned to build a house there someday, and then he would like to be annexed.
This will be his house.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah, he was.
Well, this is gonna be his house. I know he come to me the other day and wanted to nest it on a septic system.
Do, oh, so city utilities don't run into the property, or?
No. We also have an ordinance that prohibits new hookups outside the city limits.
So in order for him to get.
If he wanted city services, he'd have to annex.
But more likely, he'll want it powered there, right?
Yeah, and power, power's different. You know, he'll get power, it's just water and sewer that he would have to annex.
But then, you said he wants a septic out there?
Yeah. Put a septic system in, because you can't hook on the Evapco.
And he can't hook up to us unless he annexes it. Maybe he's, maybe he wasn't gonna run the city, he told us at one time he was going to, maybe he's changed his mind.
So nothing out there that he's fine on doing is gonna hurt the city anyway?
Nah, it's, it's a structure out there, it'd be a, kinda just be in, like an acreage out there. So, I'm gonna, I would respond back that we've been consulted. Couple of different things for you. Within our budget for this year in our capital improvements plan, we have wanted to get a large monitor and mount it up there on the wall, and that way we could show maps or whatever we'd have on our, on a laptop here that we could connect to it, and show things to the city council, show things to the public about what's being given. So I went and talked to Steve up Ziggy's today. A 50-inch Toshiba would run $669 to buy a 50-inch one, which we want something nice and big so that everybody can see it, you know. Another 100 bucks probably for a bracket to mount it on the wall, so we had budgeted $1,000 for that, and.
But then we wouldn't probably get all this paper everywhere.
You'd still get the paper.
We just wanna be able to show the public.
I know, we would get the paper. No, but I mean, I don't know, whatever.
We wanna put Gus on there during the.
Well, that's the main thing, is when Gus is Skyping, his big old face is gonna be on up there. 50 inches.
I can see all of you there.
Yeah, there you go.
We're orange.
Anyway, I'd like to proceed with that, anybody?
Get it done. I think we're ready to approve.
Yes, I say we've budgeted, if that's all right. Get it here locally with AJ's.
I'm glad to see we're staying local.
Yep, we weren't looking anywhere.
I was thinking the same thing when I was looking through this, I thought, man, if we had a screen up there, we'd just.
Terrible, huh?
Get it up there.
Good. We submitted our REAP grant for the Bath House Project. Those grants are scored on September 4th, and actually, they're scored in a session where we go down and sit in the meeting, so I'll be down there at that meeting on September So that's still pending, the bad side of that is that we did not get any funding from the Bill Renzi Foundation for either one of our projects. Sack County Conservation will be trimming trees down the Sauk Trail, and a lot of the area outside the city limits, but they asked to be able to use the dump, and then I said that they would be able to dump at the, at the city dump area, trees from the trail. And just in FYI, we sent out three notices for lawn mowing today.
Horse shoe got mowed.
Give them a week. What's that?
Horse shoe got mowed.
I just, I just said that sucker.
Coming into town, it was mowed, I figured you must've really called them.
You know, the house that Dusty, or his family, or whoever, that needs to be mowed.
Ted was checking on the pickup today.
No.
I don't know where they live.
I don't either, I haven't seen him for.
Dusty, Raritan, whoever's house.
Where he used to live, was that pickup we were gonna check on?
Yep, I talked to him today, I believe. It's actually not on his property now, it moved it to his neighbors.
Still gotta go.
There it is.
And he needs to mow.
I don't, he doesn't own that property.
No, Kennevick owns it.
I ain't proposing, I think, to the sister.
No, I don't think so.
His sister bought it.
Yeah, I think it's.
Kennevick from Carol.
Right.
Someone who's gonna marry him.
They can do that.
Dry.
They can do that.
Something, I know you guys don't like to hear it, but, you know, if this lake, it's gonna stay like this, and we have all this nice weather, and nobody at our lake, I really think sometime we ought to be looking at a pool. No kidding, I really do. It bring a lot of people into town, this one over the wall, I think, the last forever. I mean, we need a place for these people, we've had a lot of 90-degree weather, they're in a hole in that lake, and I don't blame them. And I mean, I know you, most of you guys here don't think it's necessary, but it's just something that, food for thought, or whatever, I don't care what you call it, I ain't making, you know, but it's something I really feel like needs to be done, and I probably ain't gonna use it, but it's something that's, you know.
I'm sure a lot of the little kids.
Oh, yeah. They're an expensive little process, but.
Well, yeah, but if the town of Lake City can afford to put up a pool.
Yeah.
My God, and there's no reason, I mean, that we couldn't, we shouldn't be able to afford that. I know the upkeep on it is outrageous and all that, it's just, and it ain't a big money maker, but it does bring people to town. And it's just something that needs to be.
Where would you get money for something like that, Scott?
The most common thing is that you have to pass a referendum to issue a bond issue.
Either before or after the sewer project, we don't know. Newell's gonna replace theirs, 982,000 or something, to replace their.
Yeah, I know Cherokee just went through a couple of years ago.
What was, Lake City's was what, 4.?
It's a million bucks without.
4.3 million, I think.
And Carol's wanting to vote, I don't know how to vote, man.
They turned it down.
They turned it down.
They turned the lazy river down.
Yeah. It was, the only reason it was cast, or had to vote on it, because when they made the proposal, original proposal, there was gonna be a vote, whether they wanted the lazy river to, so they had to bring that up. Nobody really wanted it, there was some people, but the reason they had to follow the procedure that was written up when they passed the original, that's why they had that vote.
Why'd you get a text message, don't forget to vote, yes, I thought, I don't want there.
That's just something I think we need to, I ain't saying we need to do it, you know, I'm saying we need to take a serious look at this sometime, because it's.
But you take a look at, what's, look, but school starts Wednesday?
I know.
So there's two weeks of, you know, of August that you lose, and.
It keeps getting shorter.
Huh?
It keeps getting shorter.
Yeah, that's just it.
We need to do like this.
Eckery went to school, they've been at school a week already. So.
Like Memorial, you know, Minnesota, they've always been Memorial Day, Labor Day, you know, and that's, you know, even when they changed this years ago, we used to be that way, and you couldn't believe what a difference that made in the knowledge.
Million bucks a day, but the, all the towns or schools get a waiver to start early. They just, now they start them all, and.
Well, and this is.
You got anything else?
Yep.
Oh, make sure everybody, the Black Hawk Lake Association is Saturday, 9:30, and.
I bet the city might get a little award for something if you all are there.
On the 28th, we have the economic tour, development tour down at Hancock, at Evapco, so.
Yeah, I guess that's important and need to.
Very important.
Know, kinda get a feel for how many people will be able to attend that, be, when the Department of Economic Development head comes, that's on the 28th, Thursday, the 28th.
I know.
Why don't you be in Fargo? You'll probably be in Fargo.
Oh, Fargo or Claire, Denver, I don't know where I'll be. It's wherever they send me.
Anyway, Scott will send everybody a little email the day before each one of these things starts, nobody forgets. If you can't, you can't, but.
I could probably, I'll try and see if I can work my day before I leave in the afternoon or something, see what happens, so I won't make no promises and all that, I'd like to be there.
What would be really good, at least, you know, if you can come spend the day, that'd be terrific. If you could be there for lunch, I think that'd be great, just come down for lunch.
Who's grill on?
Don Durner and Neil Stankin, the Lake Protective Association.
Neil is, too, taller.
And just remember, everybody got their tax. And just remember, everybody got their tax statement the other day, that the city has not raised their asking in, what, eight years, ten years now? The taxes went up because the valuations went up, has nothing to do with the city asking for more money, so, in case anybody mentions that, we didn't do anything.
Yeah, and I, I can't believe they keep, the values just keep going up. I mean, everybody needs to join together and file protests. We have a certain timeframe, and you can do that, but.
Yeah, but when we have, what, fifteen thousand, eighteen thousand dollar ground, twenty thousand dollar ground, one of them's pretty fat.
And everybody knows where the wishing well's at. We've had this issue in the past several times since I've been on, there's a sidewalk that goes in front of those people's property, those people are not happy. They put up a sign on the city parks property the other day, so we pulled it off and told them, you can't do that. So some of the neighbors have come up to me, and they said, how about if we pay for cement from that sidewalk up to the road to divert people away from there? And I said, well, if you raise the money, I'll come and talk to the council. So whenever they raise the money, I'll come back. The people that down there don't want people on their sidewalks.
So they want, they want a sidewalk at the end there to go straight up the hill?
No, they wanna go up to the hill, to Lakeshore Drive, north of the North House there. They just don't want people walking on their sidewalks.
So who put that sidewalk?
Breitland's house.
I don't, that was been in here since God had. But we've had this issue in the past, but.
They wanna put it on the city property.
They wanna put the sidewalk in there, but at least it would divert people from getting on their property.
Don't think so, but.
Now, it don't cost the city any money. Anyway, as soon as they raise the money, I'll let you know, and you can decide, how's that?
Sounds good.
Anything else?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I don't think I do that much since we started.
Jerry did.